Ready?
Yep.
Fine. Okay, you gotta get started here, ready? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Northampton County Council Meeting on February 2nd, 2017 to order. Please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you, and now the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Zimbo, can you call the roll?
Mr. Bennell.
Here.
Mr. Cusick.
Present.
Mr. Dietz.
Here.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Geisinger.
Present.
Mr. Kraft.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Vaughn.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
All present, with Mr. Dietz participating by phone.
All present, one telephonically. Next item is courtesy of the floor. We had no one that signed up. Is there any member of the public that would like to address council this evening? Okay, there being none, I'll just note and welcome our visitors from the Easton AP Government Class this evening. Oh, um, next item, approval of the minutes, January 19th, 2017. Do we have a motion?
Acclamation.
Moved by Mr. Warner to approve by acclamation, seconded by Mr. Bennell. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? No, passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move into the Controller's Report. Mr. Barron is not here this evening. Is there anyone from his office? No. Next is the County Executive's Report, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, Councilor. Just one item to update you on, and that's relative to, at the last meeting, we talked about the financial finish for Greysdale for 2016. At that point, I had indicated we were still rolling up the numbers, that we'd end up somewhere between 400 and 800,000. The actual number, at least today, and that's still subject to slight change, but is 208,000 was the operating finish for Greysdale. Once I did receive that information, we did then talk about and follow up with the bed sale dollars. Both Mr. Warner and Mr. Phillips were of the opinion that should stay. Because it was such a close, tight finish, while it's a positive, I did then instruct fiscal to take the bed sale dollars, which I think was 834,000, and move that into the Greysdale revenue account. So when we rolled the books together officially, they'll end up about slightly over a million-dollar fund balance coming out of 2016, with the caveat that that is based on bed sale being a one-time revenue line item, and that's including the 2.4 million IGT revenue that we did receive. But that'll be what will carry forward in the financials going forward. Any questions?
Yeah, to what do you attribute the significant change from, I think you were between 400 and 800, and now it's 208?
Yeah, one of the challenges that we brought into, and this has been a historic challenge, is the revenue that has been uncollected as of 12/31, we have a 90-day window in the following fiscal year. So we really have from January 1st to March 31st to collect that revenue, and it's always anticipating what will we actually be able to get on the books in that window. That's fiscal and the auditor's job to kind of take a look at that, and because of, they felt some of the revenue we originally anticipated would come in as being deferred outside that 90-day window, that dropped the, that dropped the number. So it's really, and again, it's always splitting hairs as to which way we allocate that money in a deferred revenue or book it on for the current fiscal year.
Anything else for the executive? No?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move into old business. First item on the agenda is a public hearing on ordinance, amending ordinance number 603-2015, titled "An Ordinance Establishing the Livable Landscapes and Open Space Plan for Northampton County and Further Providing for the Administration of the 21st Century Open Space Initiative." The ordinance was introduced by Mr. Dietz and Mr. Geisinger at the January 19th meeting, and the public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at this meeting. Let's see. Mr. Dietz is not here. Would you like to introduce it, Mr. Geisinger?
I will, Mr. President, thank you. The, this is essentially a change to an existing, so I will strictly read the underlying portion, if that is acceptable to you, Mr. President. The change goes to item 6, which is on the last page. "Further, the Northampton County Council directs that the Livable Landscape Program replace the Open Space Neutral Areas Grant Program with the Environmental Services Assistant Grant Program and allow for the acquisition and restoration of natural land."
Okay, at this time, we need to conduct a public hearing regarding the change to the ordinance. Is there any member of the public that would like to address council related to this ordinance? So there being none, we'll move into, any questions, comments from members of council? The only comment I'll make is I'll just thank Brian Kope for the work that he put into this. I think moving this funding into the Livable Landscapes Program provides us with a significant flexibility, whereas before, the money was strictly siloed for specific items, and this is going to give him the ability to move money and do things, you know, that he wasn't able to do before. So I'm definitely in favor of this. Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I'm in favor of it also, and I think that it allows us to be efficient and not re-event the wheel. You know, we accept the Livable Landscape Program, replace, it gave us a template, in all agree that, actually, there's some things on that I didn't like, and I didn't vote for, but I accept the fact that that is the blueprint that we have moving forward, and I think that this is a really efficient way of doing it.
Mr. Warner?
I also want to thank Mr. Cusick and Mr. Phillips on this. Also, we had a discussion about changing this and working with Brian to make sure we could get money that would help our farmland preservation programs out. I think it's a good move, and I think it'll make our job easier this year.
Any other comments from council? Ms. Zimbo, can we call the vote then?
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. That was all we had under old business. Is there any other old business any member of council would like to bring up at this time? Okay, there being none, next item is new business, the introduction of an ordinance titled "An Ordinance Establishing a County Policy for Periodically Reviewing the Status of All Properties Qualifying for Exemption from Property Taxation Under the Institutions of Purely Public Charities Act." And the ordinance will be introduced by myself, and Mr. Geisinger has agreed to be a co-sponsor. The public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at the February 16th, 2017 meeting. That was the only item under new business. Is there any other new business that any member of council would like to bring up at this time? Okay, there being none, we will move into council committee reports. We have any committee reports?
Oh, the economic development.
Mrs. Ferraro?
The Economic Development Committee met this evening, and there were several things on the agenda of significance. Meals on Wheels is here to gave us a PowerPoint presentation and thanked us for our contribution. There was discussion regarding the Da Vinci Science Center grant, and they are asking for another $50,000 for their feasibility study, which would be a total of 100,000 out of the 2005 hotel tax. So that'll be coming before us probably at the next meeting. And third, our own Department of Economic Development, Community Economic Development, gave us the 2016 year in review with an extensive presentation and summary. So thank you for that.
Any other committee reports, Mr. Phillips?
Just a reminder that the Capitol Projects Meeting has changed, the date has changed, so it'll be immediately after our next Finance Committee meeting.
Okay. Mr. Warner?
I was on the teleconference for the CCAP meeting on January 23rd with Brenda Penyac, the Deputy Director. The priorities are to advance information to counties and abdicate on behalf of representative regions. The areas of concern they're going to be talking about and working with, and since you attend those meetings, these will be coming up. Human service funding and system reform, state funding provided if there is a budget impasse that could happen, provisions for rebalancing of funds. This could be bad in terms of what could happen to the counties if there is an impasse. They talked about the Act 13 Shield Gas Impact Fee. They would like to propose a severance tax in addition to the impact fee to help the counties, and also eliminating school taxes, relying on mandates to provide and go up if needed property tax reform options to add local sales tax and personal income taxes, and last but not least, substance abuse. It impacts our counties with something called a Vivitrol program. I don't know if I said that correctly. And then funds for treatment. So it was, it was very informative, and there's more to come.
Yeah, I think the most significant thing that I've heard is that the governor is poised to propose merging several departments, and I guess the question will be, how will that affect counties? And it really hasn't been addressed, and so we'll have to look forward to seeing what they're going to do. Any other committee reports? Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Dietz?
Yeah, on February 16th, at 4:00 at the Open Space, we're going to have the Wildlands Conservancy do a short presentation. That's the group that we signed the three-year agreement with to help advise Ryan for our Open Space project.
Okay. Okay, so we'll look forward to that. Anything else? Okay, next, council liaison reports. Anything there? Mr. Phillips?
I attended Lehigh Valley Planning Commission meeting, and in the course, I asked Becky about the Sinagro, because that was on discussion here, and they do a very nice job of analyzing it from a lot of different aspects. However, that has not gotten to their desk, it's not even in a pipeline at Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. I also went to Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, their Transportation Subcommittee, which I'm a member of also in that regard. I also went to Lehigh Valley Planning Commission freight study. Been spending a lot of time over on Boulevard in Elletown. That's all.
Okay. Any other liaison, Mr. Geisinger?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick update, the Board of Governors of the airport did meet last week, or actually Tuesday, we met on Tuesday. There were new officers elected, Michael Dowd, former member of this body, has been repeated as chairman for a second year. Chuck Diakont and Eddie Lozano, both of Northampton County, are the Vice Chairman and Secretary Treasurer respectively. I have been reappointed as the Northampton County Representative to the Executive Committee, and Mr. John Cramsey of Lehigh County is the Lehigh County Representative. So that is the new slate of officers for the year moving forward. Also, as was indicated in the newspaper, the airport is moving in a direction to facilitate the rather rapid increase that we have in the operations regarding freight that are being shipped out of there, and that is providing a significant income stream for, of revenue for the airport, and looks to continue to grow. Also, the RFQs for Braden, which I know we are all interested in, have been put out on the street, we expect those back on February 15th. And there were, I want to say five different, five or six different entities that did take those and are putting bits in for them.
That's good.
Looking forward to that.
Any other liaison, Mr. Warner?
Greysdale report, obviously good news from our county executive tonight that the beds have been moved into that account, bring us to, I'll say roughly 1.2. I'm not a math teacher, I was an English teacher, so.
43.
Okay, and also, there's been, there have been numerous meetings for a group that's being formed, a nine-board voluntary group called the Friends of Greysdale. They're putting together the 501(c)(3) program that will set up a tax incentive for philanthropists to be able to donate money to Greysdale, and it will be, it will be set up within the next two months.
That's good news. Any other liaison?
On that, on that 501(c)(3) or whatever you're doing, every gift that comes to Greysdale, this body has to approve, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's great.
And if you choose to turn it down, you can.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's going to turn it down.
I don't know where this falls, but I do recall seeing several emails related to farmland preservation. Mr. Dietz, were you at that meeting on Monday, or?
I was not, no.
Okay. Ms. Allen, do you have any information regarding that? Okay, because I do recall we've received several emails related to certifying the amount that we're forwarding to the state, and it was my hope that we might get an update this evening, but.
I haven't, I haven't looked at that, so I'll give you the information that I understand. My understanding is, you know, the county did certify the funds that we'd be putting up to the state, it would be $538,000, those are county monies. As far as I know, at this point, the townships have elected not to put any matching funds in, in the certification to the state. That's about, that's about as, all I know at this point. I don't know if it's changed since then.
Okay, well, thank you. The other liaison, Mr. Dietz, I guess this one is yours too, 911, where are we going with that?
Correct, yep. So on February 16th, during the regular council meeting, they will be presenting, Mr. Weaver will be presenting where they stand at the joining of the 911 centers.
Yeah, if I may.
Yeah, Mr. Warner?
I attended the COT meeting, and Todd Weaver was there, and he put on a wonderful presentation about what his plans are for the 911, and what his, he brought a Bethlehem, I can't remember his name now, Tom? I can't think of it, I should have had it in my notes, I didn't. He brought a Bethlehem representative for the discussions on what's going to be taking place in the next few months, and I think he'll be here to make presentations for us on that.
Yeah, so Mr. Weaver's going to be here on the 16th. We did forward the information to the City of Bethlehem, and they're welcome to attend, and, you know, I'd encourage them if they would like to have any input, I look forward to his presentation. Okay, any other liaison? Clerk report? Well, then I'll just remind you that Linda and I met with the outside auditors on Monday afternoon. One of the issues that did come up was the Greysdale ordinance with regards to excess funds, so that's on the radar of the auditor. If there are any additional questions that anyone would like to bring up, you could contact, Linda has the contact, and they'd be glad to speak with any member of council that has any specific concerns. We did hear a lot about new GASB regulations.
And John?
Yep.
And actually, I think the farmland meeting was actually moved through this upcoming Tuesday, the 7th, at 8:00. I think there was an issue with the date that it was posted or something. So actually, it's this upcoming Tuesday at 7:00 over at the Greystone Building.
I don't, does anybody know anything about the farmland preservation meeting? I mean, we've got, we got a couple of emails.
That meeting was this past week. I sat in with, it was past Monday, yes.
I thought it was supposed to be on, was it Monday or Tuesday?
It was Monday.
Yeah, it was Monday, because we, I had the meeting with the auditor, and I couldn't make it.
One of the questions that came up at that meeting was the discussion on GASB, but I can't report back.
At the farmland?
At the farmland preservation.
Well, you know, again, if that's a specific question that you'd like to address with the auditors, feel free to contact them, and we'll do that. Anything else under liaison or clerk? No, next is Solicitor's Report, Mr. Lauer?
Just reporting that I was asked to render an opinion, which I have circulated, in response to an inquiry from Mr. Phillips.
Yeah, actually, I was kind of surprised when during a presentation, Mr. Brown said that the controller allowed the broadcast of a social security number of a, of a former employee, and I was concerned that a law had been broken. I was concerned that there may be exposure to the county, there may be exposure to the council. Had a lot of questions. I mean, it seemed on the face of it, as a layman, you know, it's very inappropriate. But I asked Phil if he could look into that and look at any laws were broken, and, you know, what was available to the county council to address. But Phil, would you want to talk about that?
Sure. The, essentially, there are, there's a federal privacy act which says in a more general way that certain types of identifying information are not to be disclosed by, by governments or those who have this information in their possession, and more particularly, the Social Security Act itself specifically says that social security account numbers and related records obtained or maintained by authorized persons shall be confidential, and no authorized person shall disclose any such social security account number or related record. And then there are enforcement provisions in both the Privacy Act and in the Social Security Act. They actually provide for, in both cases, criminal penalties, and they also provide for civil enforcement. As I indicated in my opinion, while those remedies are certainly available, I don't believe that that's something that this council can pursue. Certainly, that would be up to law enforcement, and in fact, in, with respect to the Privacy Act, it would be strictly federal law enforcement, and I would expect the same would be true with respect to social security. So I don't think there's anything, to the extent that there was a violation, I don't believe that there is anything that council must or should be doing. There's also a provision for civil enforcement, or if you will, someone to make a claim that they have somehow been financially harmed, those would be made by the person who has in fact been harmed, and the oath acts provide for that kind of recovery. In short, I think, to the extent that a social security number was disclosed publicly or otherwise to anyone else, then that's a violation of two federal laws. However, I don't believe that's something that county council has the authority to address. And furthermore, to the extent that county council wished to take some kind of action, that would have to be taken by the county solicitor, and I don't, I don't see an action that can be taken, at least with respect to just that issue.
Mrs. Ferraro?
I'd like to make an announcement on a lighter note. If you're going home tonight at 8:00, please turn on The Big Bang Theory. Wishkill Township's own Kate McCucci will be in the show tonight. What can I say? She's an Asworth kid.
On that note, is there anything, Mr. Phillips?
I would like the clerk to send a copy of this over to the district attorney.
Okay.
And I think that, I'm not in a position to even suggest it, but my mind is running is that we have to, as a council, understand what our actions are other than legal, what we can, what we can do.
No, I mean, I share some of the concerns that have been raised, but, you know, there really is no legal action that council can take. I just know that if any of our HR employees were engaged in such an act, I think they would be promptly suspended and subsequently dismissed. So I do think what happened was wrong, you know, but what can we do about it? Appears very little.
Well, I think you jumped in the gun a little bit, because I believe all the Social Security Act and everything is when you willfully take social security numbers and use them for your own, then they're your own means. And this was something that he did, which was foolish, and had it on a screen, and it was remedied right away. But if he did it on purpose maliciously to make some kind of gain, then I think Phil Lauer's whole thing would be appropriate. But since that isn't the case, I don't think you have your case that you're looking for.
Yeah, I'm not actually looking for a case. I heard something that sounded foolish is probably the kindest word, and I didn't think it would be appropriate for us, let me just say myself, I couldn't bury my head in the sand and say I didn't hear that. This is not going to go anywhere anyway. I think that there was something that had to be documented. I feel very happy with what Phil has done, and I feel that there is not a legal remedy for this. But I do think that this action that we've gone through so far is appropriate.
Yeah, you know, if he was taking a social security number and opening up accounts and all, yeah, then it would be appropriate, but this is a misstep, or a foolish act, as you like to say, or whatever I said it was, it was dumb.
I have a stronger word.
It was dumb, but it wasn't done intentionally, it was found out, it was taken off wherever it was, it was cited, and it's very hard to find that, pick that out of the, on the screen, but irregardless, you're right, and Phil, you're absolutely right with stating the law, but you have to show that they were, it's a criminal intent, or some kind of, some kind of intent on the person to gain something from it, not just a accidental disclosure. And I really don't think you have anything there, but hey, forward it to the DA, and he can tell you that.
Mr. Vaughn?
Just a quick question, would you say that that statement's accurate, Phil, that we need to prove criminal intent, or do we have negligence as well as something that could be, you know, part of that federal act?
Well, I mean, I think the most direct statement is the one in the Social Security Act saying that those, literally saying, "Social security numbers are confidential," and "no authorized person shall disclose a social security number." But with that said, I mean, it's, it's a common concept in the law that for something to be criminal, one has to intend for it to happen. And I don't, I don't know whether, well, I didn't see the supposed video, but my understanding of what occurred is that the individual who disclosed it wasn't aware initially that it was actually disclosed, and took some steps to remedy it once that was found out. So I think one could conclude from that, that that's not an intentional act, meaning you have a criminal intent, you know that you're disclosing it. I don't know. I don't know enough about it, but the information that I've heard seems to suggest that this was disclosed by somebody who wasn't, didn't know initially what they were disclosing. No, that's.
Mr. Warner?
I'd just add, just adding into this, I looked up some things about the Government Finance Officers Association, which has some guidelines on ethics and the standards, and it says, "Regardless of circumstance," I'll put that in quotes.
Okay. Okay.
They shall respect and protect privileged information to which they have access to by virtue of their office. Protect privileged data which you have access to by virtue of your office. They shall be sensitive and responsive to queries from the public, from the media, within the framework of state or local government policy. So if it was an accident, yes, dumb move, but there are, there are standards, and there are things that have to be followed, and the wording is specific. It says regardless of the situation.
Mr. Bennell?
I guess my question in this whole thing was, you know, let's face it, I think it was a political stunt, me personally. So whether it was an accident, stupid, it was a political stunt. I don't think the Controller's Office should have access to anybody's social security number, because I don't think it falls into the realm of their duties. My question here is, are we exposed to any liability as a county?
Well, I mean, to the extent that there was a disclosure, and to the extent that, well, first of all, I don't think the county has any criminal liability with respect to civil liability. I think the liability would lie with the individual who disclosed the information. I don't see anything about what occurred that would indicate that this was an action taken on behalf of the county. So, no, I don't, I think it would be a stretch to say that the county would be somehow financially liable.
Anything else for the solicitor?
No.
Anything else this evening to come before council? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mr. Bennell, seconded by Mr. Warner. Have a nice evening, everyone.